I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, uh, Wolf.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Attending via Zoom in Lowell.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here. Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
All right, any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
Jake Davenport, 527 Lafayette Street. Uh, I'm sure as all of you know, this Saturday marks the twentieth remembrance of the September 11th attacks. So myself along with a high bad dozen other volunteers, we will be placing 2,997 flags out here on the sidewalk in commemoration of the twentieth remembrance. So all you guys aren't right at the city council, city staff are ready to come out and attend and see everything we got going on over there.
What time is it?
Nine to four.
Nine to four.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else? Old Business Downe Jean Ford Fund.
As you're aware, the city received a donation of approximately $110,000 from the estate of Don G. Ford to be used in conjunction with the Lowell Showboat Garden Club for community beautification projects. To date, the city has received approximately $12,000 of these funds. The remaining funds are invested in mutual funds, which have yet to be turned over to the city. These funds are being administered by Edward Jones. Michigan statute does not allow for municipalities to own stocks or mutual funds. For several months, the city attorney has been working with legal counsel from Edward Jones on how the city can receive these funds. One solution is that Edward Jones can in essence cash out the mutual funds and turn them over to the city. In order to do this, the city must approve this action via council resolution. I've attached the information from Edward Jones regarding this and Resolution 1221 to approve this transaction. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve Resolution 1221 authorizing Edward Jones to liquidate the mutual funds due to the city of Lowell and distribute them to the city of Lowell.
We don't take a penalty for cashing them off?
No.
All right, any other questions for Mike? Motion for Resolution 1221.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
All right, USDA bond resolution, 1321 and 1521.
Yes, uh, we're gonna be, um, presenting to you resolutions tonight for these projects. Um, as you know, we have been planning these projects for about two years. We're now at the point where, um, we are gonna actually start the financing process of this. One of the requirements that we have to have done is we have to have a rate analysis done, um, how it's gonna impact our rate speed. This is close to a nine million dollar project. Um, there, you know, there is, there is, there is a review, there is a review process to this. Uh, Peter Hager is here tonight. He did the rate analysis for us, um, and he's gonna walk you through the impacts of this.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I brought a slide presentation that walks through, um, the information that we've accumulated together. I've been working with, uh, your main, or your city manager, um, and we've met several times regarding the rates. We've talked to your financial advisor, um, we've talked to USDA, and so kind of put together this package. If you would go to the next slide for me, please. So, so here is a picture of what is intended to occur in 2022. You would issue bonds, um, or bonds and cash financing for approximately $4.2 million dollars, and in 2023, it would be $4.15 million approximately. And if you would go to the next slide for me, this is a picture of what's going to occur. Um, the, in 2022, water will expend $100,000, the water fund, and the water fund will also take down a portion of the bonds that will be issued, approximately $1.6 million. And in 2022, sewer fund will expand $100,000, and it will take on approximately $2.4 million of bonded debt. Um, and then when you take a look at 2023, pretty much a very similar scenario, $100,000 of cash invested out of the water and sewer funds, and then taking out the bonded debt associated with the projects on Monroe and Washington. If you would go to the next slide for me, um, this is a look at the debt service that will be necessary to repay the bonds. So the first line that we see here for the water fund, these are current outstanding bonds that mature approximately 2043. I can't show you every year because there's 40 years of debt service and it just wouldn't fit on the page. So the black line shows your current debt. The blue line shows the additional debt added on top of that, and then the yellow line shows in 2023 issuance of that last bond issued and adding additional debt service for 40 years. And if you would go to the next slide, very similar scenario, but you can see on the left, the scale has increased. So the sewer fund will be taking on more debt than the water fund. Sewer funds more costly, the sewer component of the project, deeper, um, and things of that nature. But if you look again, your current bonds outstanding, approximately $150,000 worth of debt service a year through 2043, and then we will add on the 2022 debt, and then the 2023 debt, for a total debt service through approximately 2043 of $300,000. If you would go to the next slide for me, um, I just wanted to discuss, um, a little bit of information associated with these bonds. So the USDA bonds are what you are currently looking at issuing, and those bonds require that you have, um, you have net income with some add back items sufficient to cover 100% of the debt service. And it, and it makes sense from the perspective of who wants to borrow you money if you are projecting you're not likely to be able to repay it. Um, in your case, you actually have dollars in your water and sewer funds, so you are going to expend a portion of those dollars, and the USDA likes to see you put some dollars into the process, and then they will finance the differential. So in the case of the USDA, they're looking for bond coverage or times coverage of one time, so that you can cover the costs of the debt over the next X, Y, Z years. If you issue standard revenue bonds, typically the coverage ratio is 1.2x. So you would actually need to have more revenue, um, in the case of revenue bonds that are not issued by, through the USDA, and the USDA has a lower coverage requirement. But regardless, you need to be aware that they're looking for that one times coverage of the debt service. Uh, also, the USDA comes with a, uh, an interest rate of 1.75, which you won't get in open water. So the concept is to go with the USDA, and what we did is we put four years of audited financial information, uh, statement of net position, statement of revenues, expenses and changes in net position, and statement of cash flows into a model. And we also added 2021, so we did 2017 through 2020. The audit for 2021 has not been, um, begun, but we used the numbers that you have, and then we compared across those years, and, and I sat down with your city manager, and we said, what is a reasonable inflation rate for costs associated with the city as well as with the township? As this township has typically been growing in capacity, as well as, um, uh, the city rates have been increasing over time, which is just the necessity of inflation. So, so what we have here is a picture of your net income projected for 2021 based on the financial information you had in your accounting system. And then we basically add back depreciation expense on your capital assets, because that's not a cash expense. And we also add back interest expense, and we say, what's the amount available for debt service? So in 2021, that amount available is $329,000, the debt outstanding, which is only the bonds issued pre-USD funding, and we say your coverage ratio is 4.99x. So your income was sufficient to service that debt 4.99x. And so then we say, we're going to add a layer of debt on to, in this case, the water fund, and the water fund, you will see on the right there, um, the, the, uh, the debt service costs go up over time. So basically, we go through this calculation, and we say, we need to have a coverage ratio of X. And in the case of the water fund, you can see that the coverage ratio in the middle of the page here is over one times. Now, keep in mind that occasionally you need repairs that might be above and beyond the typical, you know, thousand dollar part or what have you. So that allows you some comfort in financing repairs or replacements with cash dollars over the term of the bond issue. So, so at the very bottom of the page, you can see there is a proposed rate increase. So in 2022, I believe you increase the rates 2%, and the thought is for 2023, 2024, 2025, the rate will increase by 1%, rather than sticking around the 2% or 3% range, as you have sufficient coverage to cover your bonds and to go forward with operations. So that's the general concept here. Now, in the case of the sewer fund, which is the next slide, you can see here in 2021, the coverage ratio was 1.3x. That meant you could pay debt service and then put away 30% of that debt service for future costs. And if you take a look in 2022, we're saying the coverage ratio would be 1.78x. And then in 2023, 1.37x. Those coverage ratios, as you can see, the amount available for debt service and then the actual debt service there, you can see how the debt service in the very middle of the page, you see how that ramps up over time? That's because the sewer fund's taking out a substantial portion of the debt associated with the Monroe and Washington projects. But unless you increase your rates by 7% for 2022, 7% for 2023, and these are projections based on your historical financial information and management's, uh, projection of what will inflation be, how will costs increase over time, and then plugging in the other nodes. We know what the debt service associated with the operations are, because the bond financial advisor gave us a schedule of what is your future debt service. So I think typically a 3% inflation rate is, uh, expected. So what we did is we took a table, and I think we did it for 50 years. So we took a table for 50 years, and what is the inflation rate that we should expect? It's been quite low lately, but if you actually go back 50 years, it jumps it up quite a height, to approximately 3%. So the thought is, going forward after 2025, the rate would stay at 3% over time, but by reducing the rate increase in water, lower, it will bring down the balance of the water fund, but that, you know, unfortunately, in order to cover these bonds, we're projecting that a 7% rate increase would be needed for 2022, 23, 24. And, and if you change the first ones, making them lower, they don't compound themselves, and you get very, you see in 2024 where you have a 1.12% coverage ratio? That's not leaving a lot of margin for error, because you just don't have huge dollars. It's not a huge operation to begin with. Does that make sense, or somewhat understandable?
Let me kind of explain what that $7, 7% means in, in actual prices. So, um, for a residential user, I, I broke this down for just the residential user. The residential user would see a $1.78 increase in the ready to serve in the first year and 29 cents on the commodity, uh, the, uh, the user component. Um, for the second year, it would be a $1.90 increase on the ready to serve and 31 cents on the commodity. And the third year, uh, a $1.75 on the ready, ready to serve and 29 cents on the commodity. That's just on the sewer end. So, I mean, the res, the residential home user pays the res, ready for service charge of both the water and sewer, and then the average, I believe the average homeowner is about five, 5,000, 5,000, I can't see, five units at, um, I can't remember. I believe it's 4.15 on the sewer, um, to, right now, um, and then additional, you would, you see over the, over the three years, you see an increase of about, um, 90 cents on that, on that user charge. So I, it is, I mean, it is an increase, but these, these lines are 80 years old, um, they're really not, the water lines are not in condition. We can, we can pay eight and a half million dollars now, or we can wait 10 years and pay 10 to 12 million dollars. And also, our sewer, our, our sewer or wastewater plant issues with the INI is just gonna continue to get worse. So we, we tried to structure this in the least harming way possible, um, but these, these, this is a mile and a half of lines that, quite frankly, they have to be replaced. And, and on top of it, the roads, which are obviously in bad condition, they're gonna be replaced as part of this as well.
And so where we started off was, we started off with one bond issue in 2022, and then it was determined that to break that into several pieces, you know, for the project over multiple years, which allows you to bring up the rates over time versus an instant, perhaps 15%. But the, the real key to this is that compounding effect. If it goes up 7%, and the next year goes up 7%, you know, over that period of time, it's more than 14%, just by adding the two together. Um, if you would go back two slides for me? Maybe three. That one, right there. So really what you're doing is you're increasing your rates to get from that $150,000 worth of debt service to, you know, nearly double. You've added $150,000 worth of debt service in the case of sewer, and if you go back one more slide, in this case, you can see you've added $100,000. So that's, that's more than 100% of where you were at. The, the issue, and, and I work with lots of city governments and lots of governments and nonprofit organizations, but the difficult part typically with smaller organizations is you don't have a lot of revenue to begin with. So when you need a million dollar project or a 8 million dollar project, the rates have to go up, or, you know, you, you won't receive findings. That's just how, how, how that generally works. And the USDA rate's very attractive. I have lots of clients that use USDA for financing, uh, sewer or for what have you, water sewer.
And these are, these, I mean, a lot of cities aren't even available to give USDA loans because of where we're situated. We are allowed, as far as I'm concerned, this is the best financing a community like ours can get.
Are, are there questions about the process or, uh, calculations? It's basically getting to a cash basis what's available to service your debt, and at that point, you have 100% coverage. That's the whole question.
No, I, Peter, thanks for this. I think it's saying everything, but, but my concern is, is we're putting a lot out on two streets, and we have many more miles of water and sewer to repair besides these two streets over the next five, 10 years, and then maybe Mike has a plan, how do we finance those, uh, well over the next five or 10 years? It just can't be these two streets only that, that need to adjust and look at.
Actually, these two are the worst in the system. To my knowledge, the rest of our system is pretty much just spot replacement. Am I missing something, Dan? But it's pretty much a spot replacement, where we just go into a spot, correct it, and move on. We're not, we're not seeing, we don't see having to replace this amount of line anywhere else than that works. It's really, it's really this. This is, this has, I mean, as I said, these, these lines are two to four inch lines. We really need them to be eight inch lines, eight inch veins. We're seeing over 400,000 gallons a day from Monroe going into the wastewater treatment plant in INI. There's not another, there's not an area in the city that we're aware of that has this need.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what was on there. Jackson, Jefferson, um, any of the connector streets as well in that same stretch?
To our knowledge, those connector streets are pretty much, uh, sufficient for what they do, as far as going from one street to the other to keep things looped. There's not very many homes on those. Uh, with, with the water, we do have a, uh, I want to say deficiency with an area of low pressure during fire flows, that this going to a larger line will take care of on both streets. And then, as, uh, as the city manager mentioned, they've got the INI with the sewer line down here on Monroe Street. Uh, the only other one we do it was on Foreman. We've taken care of that, and hopefully there's seen a big difference, especially days like this, where we had that rain just recently in the groundwater as well. So hopefully that will be taken care of. But we don't know of any other at this time, we don't know of any other issues like that. That being said, too, we are trying to clean and videotape portions of our system every year, just to keep up on that. So if something does pop up, unfortunately, we might have to take care of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, Jessica's gonna walk you through the resolutions.
All right, so do we have, I mean, there's a book there now. You have them in front of you then?
Yep.
The two notice of intent resolutions? I think we talked about this quite a while ago. Um, as you might recall, um, the Revised Municipal Hyman's Act requires that whenever you are undertaking capital improvements, you have to publish this notice in a paper for 45 days. And what, what it says it has to provide for several things, the not to exceed amount. So just so you know, just because we have these numbers and these resolutions, that doesn't mean you're gonna issue that much debt. That's the absolute maximum that you could issue without doing another notice. But you wanna be careful and do a not to exceed amount, and, you know, to, to account for, um, costs that you might not foresee. So the, the not to exceed amount, um, the source of the payment, um, in this case, we're combining water and sewer, so we've got the water bonds for 2022 and 2023 rolled up in the one notice of intent, and then the sewer bonds for 2022 and 2023 rolled up in the other notice of intent resolution. Um, the other thing that this has to provide is that if within 45 days publication, a petition is signed by not less than 10% or 15,000 of the registered voters within the city, then this goes to a vote. So that's the process, again, that statute requires. Um, and so we wanna go ahead and get these published and let that cost start, start running.
1321 is the sewer notice of intent? Okay. My motion for that one?
Support.
Any other questions on that one? Sue?
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
I'll make the motion then for 1521, same thing, except for the water system.
And I'll support.
Any questions on that one? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Jessica. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Dan, you're on Hillside Court.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, your call back in, uh, July was before you to talk about Hillside Court, and from that, uh, discussion with you folks, uh, you mentioned you wanted to find out with the rest of the residents in that area, thought of the ideas. So on, uh, August 24th, we, uh, met with, uh, six of the seven property owners up through that stretch of Hillside Court to discuss, uh, the projects and the ideas. We went over the July 15th memo that had the, uh, uh, the area in question, and then the different options that were available. Um, we have those in front of me again today, uh, during the meeting, uh, there's a discussion on this turnaround area and, and the idea of what it is and what it isn't. Um, in the end, that is where most everybody does try to turn around. We went through the, uh, the options, like I said, and the majority of the folks, which I think the majority of all of them, thought that the installation of a new road, including addressing the drainage, and installation of a full-size cul-de-sac at the end of the right of way, as was, uh, originally laid out, would be the best choice. Because there's some comments, and, and seen this firsthand, where the garbage trucks end up having to back out of that area, because there's no place for them to turn around. Uh, there's some concern with school buses won't travel to the end, because again, no place to turn. And then there's also some, uh, concerns brought up by the, the, the people at the meeting, that there's not sufficient room for delivery trucks and especially emergency vehicles such as fire trucks to maneuver at the end of the street. So their, their thoughts of wanting the road put in with the cul-de-sac so that can take place was their, their, uh, direction that they felt was the, the best solution to their roadway. Uh, so we, we continued our discussion with them on streets and, and paving and such, and we went over the seven-year paving plan, and it doesn't include Hillside Court. And then it was also pointed out, there's a lot of streets in town that are not included in the seven-year plan, just, um, anybody in town whose street hasn't paved recently would probably look at the seven-year plan and watch their street on as well. So when that was put together, you know, we tried to get as much out of, uh, the city manager put that together well, but get as much out of the program over seven years that we could, and then with the thought that every, every few years that we would go back and revisit that again. It was mentioned at the time that when the next seven-year cycle comes up, that we could look at, uh, doing something with that, and otherwise get it done quicker, would probably would need some sort of special assessment, which all the residents in attendance feel that they should be assessed for, for that for various reasons. It was a good discussion with the group. Everybody was, uh, on this basically the same page, trying to come up with a solution that could be doable, that's gonna work for everybody. Um, again, with the seven-year, uh, paving plan, city manager went over current, how the current street funding is done with the state, plus also went over how the new marijuana facility funding, funds that are coming in that have been earmarked for streets, but at this time, you know, we're in the second year of this whole program, still have to make sure the assumptions that were made on financing are correct, and that, uh, prices and such are, are gouging into us too much to, to meet our, meet our expectations. So again, we, we did discuss that, you know, every time we go about updating it, it would, uh, look into adding more streets and Hillside Court could be considered at that time. So it came through at the end of the discussion, and the conclusion came up of whatever does take place isn't gonna happen in 2021. I mean, we're at the end of the construction season, and the, uh, major reconstruction of roadways takes time to design, takes time to get out for biz, and get contractors in and hammer into September already. It just isn't gonna happen this year. So we did have some discussions on what could be done to the current situation to improve it for now, and then work into the other end of it as far as reconstructing. Um, it was brought up again, the dust, the dust situation up there. There's a resident has a health issue, and the illuminating of the dust would be greatly, uh, approved, uh, great improvement for that person who does live very close to that turnaround. Um, and again, in the original proposal, we did have a suggestion of paving that, uh, a 24 by 40-foot area where the current turnaround is, um, well, it won't provide a solution for the emergency vehicles and the larger vehicles. It would help to reduce the dust from anybody that would turn around on that. And for smaller vehicles, it should be sufficient to get them through there. There were total rough costs of about $7,500 to do that. Again, it was a very good meeting, very good input from the residents. Uh, we have, I think, three residents here today, and I'll pay you one to speak to this. But that's my presentation on what we discussed, and if you'd like to.
I have a question.
Dan, I'll say.
Yeah.
If I have a question?
Yep.
Go ahead, Clark.
If we did the $7,500 stopgap, is that gonna make it through the winter?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I would, you know, it'd be a couple inches of asphalt on, we'd make sure that that gravel base that's there now would be sufficient to hold up for, for new asphalt. It should hold up just fine for several years to come, if it's built properly.
Am I correct in gathering that the residents are not at all excited about that option?
Well, we've got some residents here, they can speak towards it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Did he ask a question?
Does he have something else?
I completely understand. My name is Carrie Kaufman, I'm at 800 Hillside Court. I completely understand that budget's tight, something like that. I hear a lot of that. My budget's tight, too. And we just spent $17,000 to redo our driveway, which is directly across the street from where the hypothetical spot where everyone turns around on. I know Mr. Thompson said that's not a real turnaround, that's my property. So the individual that has complained about problems with asthma and dust, I really wanna make sure that that is noted. That individual joined, went and left to serve in the military, and the military said, "I'm sorry, we're gonna have to discharge you because you have asthma." So I really kinda feel that it would be great if our city would at the very least fix the problem with the dust, so this person who is discharged from sacrificing his life for our freedom could at least get that taken care of within our city. And I would think that there would be at least enough from that to be taken care of. With regards to the remainder of the amount being taken care of, I mean, yeah, it'd be great if it was on a seven-year, you know, turnaround. The problem with the seven-year turnaround is if you're not gonna be here, you may not. So then it goes to another seven years, another seven years. And finally, one day, when I'm in nursing homes rolling over my Cheerios, maybe it'll get taken care of, I don't know. But I think that in an immediate standpoint, it would be very, very appreciative to get that taken care of. Not to mention that, there's a lot of kids on that road that walk up and down. That road is not able for cars to pass. We have to, in the summertime, we move all the way up on the side where the trees are, trying not to have the trees to pass each other. During the wintertime, it's kind of, well, who wants to play chicken first? Because there's snow on each side, you know? My concern is if Mr. Thompson grasses off that area and will put a fence, because people will still try to use it, so it's guaranteed he's gonna put a fence. Understandably so, that's his property. There's not gonna be a cloud service on that road. We're not gonna get cloud service. FedEx, UPS has already told me, we will refuse to deliver packages to homes there if there's no turnaround. If that turnaround that's currently there is removed, because it's hard enough for us to get that taken care of and turnaround in that area. I don't know about the garbage people, but a lot of people kinda follow suit, so it wouldn't surprise me if they also followed suit as well. So, you know, I would, I think it's important that at the very least we get a somewhat temporary fix with a projected, let's get this in the books for here or at this point in time. Because I don't foresee Hillside gaining a bunch of more retired people, no offense to retired people. But I do foresee, I'm sure there's gonna be more families eventually moving in that area, beautiful area for families, but gosh, I sure would hate it for there to be a child head, and then, well, then you got a wrongful death lawsuit going on. And that would be terrible, because no one, no one, no one wins in that situation. So I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Good evening, Councilman, my name is Larry Perez, and my family and I live at 730 Hillside Court. So we appreciate you guys actually considering this matter and listening to us, and I think that my neighbor Carrie highlighted the majority of what our concerns are. My biggest concern is, of course, surrounding children. I have two young children on the street. Although there's a certain number of houses right now, it is expanding. Mr. Thompson indicated that he's contemplating actually putting in a historic building, it's gonna have another drive. One of our other neighbors, who I don't think is here present tonight, he actually has divided his lot, there's gonna be, his parents are moving there, so there's a lot. There's a lot that is going on as far as activity, with kids going from home to home with vehicles, you know, with the snow, adding complications. So I do appreciate the time that you took out there to study and actually watch a garbage truck maneuver through there. I think that if that area is blocked off by Mr. Thompson as a property owner, it's just gonna compound with immediate problems. So we all agree that the best solution is a long-term solution, but we understand that that comes with a price tag that competes against other resources and other challenges that you guys have to deal with. So the immediate solution to try and pave that, I think remedies a health condition for one of our neighbors, and it also mitigates some of the risk if, you know, kids are moving through the street, vehicles are moving through there. So I think that's the most logical one, if we could act on that and try and keep our street as part of the focus, but understand that that's a very dynamic decision to ask to make. Thanks for listening.
I just wanna say one thing about this current turnaround area. In talking with some of our old-time employees at the city, they've been working here since 1990s, early 1990, that's always the area, you remember, so it was turning around that, that was dirt and everything else, and they tried to make it a little better, a little better. And like I said, I talked with Mr. Thompson, he said in 2016, a bunch of millings were put down there, according to Scott Flosberg, he asked, yes, they were to help with that turnaround because it was a money mess. But he recalls, and he's been here since 1991, that he recalls it's always been where they turned around to try to. And so to say that it's not a turnaround, it is, and to say, too, gotta remember we have a right-of-way up through there, this whole thing currently sits in the right-of-way, not on private property. So again, it's a street right-of-way, we prefer to have it consistent with the rest of the town, but we only have so much space up there, and we do have to try to make do with what we have, so that's where the turnaround has come from. That said, to, again, the thought was to take as much as that gravel area, 24 by 40 area roughly, and make sure that the gravel base is sturdy, and then put asphalt on top of it, and that $7,500 was enough to have a contractor come in to that.
It'd be done before winter.
That would be the goal, if we can make sure somebody can come in and do it.
Do you think you could solicit a firm bid to give that to us?
We can, but we would, if that's the direction we want to go.
Yeah, it's over $5,000, so we have to break that.
Right.
Still, though, it's a very small price to pay for somebody helping umph it in their own home.
Again, that's just that turnaround area, it's not the rest of the area.
But it eliminates part of the dust problem, which is the whole catalyst for this whole thing, am I right?
Correct.
And then maybe eventually, we can, in the next couple of years, look at resurfacing the rest of that road, widening it up a little bit.
Yeah, we have a couple options. You have a seven-year road plan right now, you can maneuver this in there, however, you know, you're taking a project away. You know, we, Dan and I were thinking about, you know, at least after, you know, next year evaluating how many of the streets we actually have in the queue that we put on paper that we said we're gonna do. And then once we knock off, hopefully we can, you know, our intent is to put down a paper what we said, what we said we were gonna do, come back to you with a couple more streets to add to the plan for a couple of years. So, and we could very easily, I mean, no matter what street we start at, we're wrong, but...
How did you start at my street?
All right, exactly, exactly.
Love it.
So we, you know, we can add to that.
I think that's all they're asking for, is to be on the radar.
Right, and they have a legitimate concern.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, I've gone out there, I've seen it, it's a legitimate concern, it's just, we have X amount of resources and we only can do so much, and we're trying to do more now than we have in the last, you know, number of years regarding streets and, you know...
Well, the main concern is getting bids for the asphalt. Once the dust is done, they're on the radar. I mean, that's all it seems to me like they're asking for right now, so...
Correct.
Which I think is pretty reasonable.
I do, too.
And since this then, to get a bids for the asphalt?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Where do we have? All right, Chief, Tim's record, Dan, is next.
Thank you. After we're done speaking here, if there's any technical questions, Sarah Lee from Car Technologies is here, she's, she'll bill the handles for you. The local police department currently uses and pays for the State Records Management System, which is called SRMS. It is serviced, maintained, and provided by the Michigan State Police. The SRMS is offered by law-possible agencies to complete and maintain departmentister reports, and data is transmitted via secure lines back to SAG and where it's stored. The SRMS system is adequate and vast for our department. We can enter and retrieve data, search the system for names, addresses, and incidents. One thing I didn't put in the memo here, the big disadvantage is the majority of the SRMS users are on the east side of the state, not in west Michigan. We can print reports to give to other agencies, such as the court, prosecutor's office, and other agencies, and the only place we can use it is inside the department on a desktop. Currently, we pay 1,600 bucks a year for the service. We also have another program that we use called Talon, which the officers use to run lien checks on vehicles, people, and property. This is a sub-program to the TIM system, and right now, our current cost for Talon is $1,075 a year. A third program that we use, which is in the car, is called eCitation, e-Crash Reports. This is through LexisNexis. This allows us to print tickets, do our UDT10 accident reports, state accident reports, and those are transmitted via electronics, through the email, to the courts and to the state, saving us time and cost of postage. Due to a mix-up, because this company's been bought and sold so many times that we have been getting billed for this for like the last 10 years, so we're all, now we're getting billed. The cost of that program is 572 a year, that's $143 per car, right now we're running for police cars. The TIM system, which is used by surrounding agencies such as Kent County, County, Spartanburg PD, Rockford, East Grand Rapids, they all use a TIM system. TIM is a much more capable system, with many features not offered by the SRMS. And for the duration that I've worked here, we have never been able to utilize our laptops in our cars to write reports. We've always had to come back to the station to write the reports. For other agencies, they can take a simple report, they can do it right in the car, move on to the next thing. So this would save time for our officers, being able to do the reports right away rather than taking them off the street with TIM, the officer can remain out in the public and complete the simple report from their car. And then I also attached information I got from Sarah, showing all the different features that the TIM system offers. And TIM will also be helpful from an administrative standpoint, with its ability to track statistics from traffic stops, crime reports overall, or specific crime reports, with a report feature not, which is not available at SRMS. Just to give you an idea what I'm talking about here, all these numbers you guys see with these stat reports that we give the council every month, as far as the traffic stops, I think is in the office looking at daily logs and making tick marks for every day we make a traffic stop, every day we make a write a citation or do an accident report and there's an injury. So it's, with this system, when the officer takes that report, it automatically goes into TIMs, and then like the other month, we can just pull up that report without having to guess, is that, did I write three tick marks or was it four? So, because we've had that happen, things just don't balance out. So we have that available to us through TIMs. It'll also interface with Kent County CAG and computer aided dispatch, keeping response to arrival and clear times more accurate, rather than the officer guessing, I think I got this call about this time and I cleared about this time. TIM is used by surrounding agencies. Local PD will have limited information sharing amongst these agencies, something we currently don't have with SRMS. And Core Technology was created, or Core Technology created the TIM system, has been around for 40 years, and is used by several police departments here in Michigan and Wisconsin. They currently have two redundant secure servers with 128-bit FIPS encryption. I have no idea what that means, but Scott put that in there for me, as well as a cloud-based backup. Having that security is required by the FBI to keep those records secure from getting hacked off-site or being attacked by ransomware. TIM also interfaces with Talon, has the ability to connect the eCitation, e-Crash, that's an extra added thing we have to buy later if we wanted it. But when we have TIMs in the car, it'll tie in all these other programs, so that if we write a traffic citation, it automatically feeds the information into TIMs, and then we can write a report off that, rather than writing everything down and putting it in this program, putting it in this program, and putting it in this program. Am I correct, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. So, cost comparisons. If we stay with SRMS, if you look at the memo, we're gonna pay $3,247 a year for all three of these programs. If we drop the SRMS and pick up TIMs, it's gonna go up to $5,147 a year, which is an increase of $1,900 a year to maintain our records management system. We have not had to pay the e-Crash, eCitation for the past 10 years, which I already told you. And the initial startup cost for TIMs, because there is a licensing, a one-time licensing and setup fee of $4,000 with a $180 discount if we prepaid, this pays for getting all the cruiser laptops in the department, desktops connected, as well as licensed in TIMs. So we will have this in every police car and every desktop. So no matter where the officer is, he can pull up TIMs and either search the system for a name or a phone number, or he can start a report. Okay? And then I mean, and I can actually give you guys very accurate reports of what we're going up to. So this will allow the officer to use the system anywhere in the department, and how do we pay for it? Currently, the local police department has monies in our salaries line item to pay for the TIM's install at our department and in our cruisers. The one-time fee for setup and the first-year subscription will cost a department $7,500. This is for the install and the first-year subscription. The local police department is asking the council for permission to spend the amount not to exceed $7,500 to have the Talon Incident Management System, or TIMs, licensed and installed in our apartment and our police cruisers, and for the first-year subscription to TIMs. I just wanna mention, I had these capabilities when I worked the road 15 years ago, so this is, this is, this would be big.
What's a no-rear, I mean, I'm a county's kid.
Right, and this is no general fund dollars, so...
Well, and it should streamline and make the department run a little better.
Yeah.
The biggest thing is pulling somebody off the road to report. If you can knock me, I know from experience, if you can knock reports out in the car while you're waiting for calls, or before you back up patrol, it makes life a lot easier.
So I do have a quick question. There's the install fee and the one-year subscription, you said that's gonna be in all of our cars and our computers. What does it look like if we get another car or more computers? Is that automatically provided in our subscription?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's based off the sworn officer we have.
Okay.
So if our department increases its size by officers, then the cost goes up, correct?
You know, we actually don't typically go back and even review that, to be honest, which means if it goes down, we probably won't review it either. But, yeah, I mean, you could add on, you get a new patrol car and a computer, we just install it, we're not, we don't pay those extra numbers.
Not that we're looking to add on X amount of cars, but I was just curious how that works.
The other program, the eCitation program, they go by computer, so...
Interesting, okay.
You're paying for the log, right? You're paying by login? Right.
So the 1,000 includes the annual service license per license fee per computer?
The 7,500?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be...
But they're not, actually, we're not gonna be hit for another reoccurring license fee for the five or six licenses we have, whatever it is.
No, it's like an annual subscription?
Yeah.
So the next year's gonna be...